The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
So, let's call our town council meeting to order. Will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is stand one nation, one God, and one principle; but liberty is just as simple.
Thank you. Roll call, Kate.
Councilor Angela Kostetzen?
Here.
Mayor Kozinski?
Here.
Councilor Laddie?
Here.
Councilor Paganessa?
Here.
Councilor Rosso? Councilor Yaronaga? Councilor Vich?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We start with our audience of citizens. If there's anyone that wishes to speak in our audience of citizens, now would be the time.
John O'Brien, Opiny Drive. I want to congratulate, basically, the reelection and the newly-elected town council, mayor, etc.
Thank you.
Good job. There's one other item I want to bring up that goes under new business. It's the fully enclosed truck wash facility, which was much needed. They're washing these trucks out in frigid weather. I want to thank you for taking care of our town employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience of citizens? Name an address for the record, if you would.
Yeah, Lemire 102 Wildemere Road. I wanted to just take a few minutes to give you an update on the planning that we've been doing for our 50th anniversary. On behalf of the committee, Jonathan has a request later, but I wanted to let you know that I was here. We've been having regular meetings. I'm out of breath. I ran up the stairs. And so, we've got members from the town at large. We're excited that both Don Paris and Art Powers have been involved. It's been interesting to some of the committee members have gone back in the records and learned a little bit about the history of the park. We have confirmed the date, so we have July 18, 2020, for the event, and that'll be a Saturday up at the park. So, put that down in your calendars. And as always, if you have any suggestions or questions, please let us know. We're working on the budget right now, finalizing things around that for expenses and sponsorships and things of that nature.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're looking forward to it. Anyone else from the audience of citizens? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. We'll move on to our meeting agenda. The first thing on our agenda is our consent agenda. We have, what do we got? Two? Three? Three items on our consent agenda. I know we've reviewed it before. We have requests from St. Gabriel's Church to waive all fees associated with replacing the roof. We have accept some monetary donations to the Berlin Peck Library, which we're always certainly happy to do, and approve a donation for a round of golf for four and two carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize for the Emma Hart Willard School Pasta Supper. So, we have our consent agenda. We'll take a motion on that.
May I make a motion to accept the three items on the consent agenda tonight?
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Moved. New business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
Thank you. Good. The first two items are the ones that we just voted in at the town meeting.
Yep.
And the first one is the appropriation of the $18,615 property tax receipts. Monies have been collected. This is the 30% that we pay to the collecting group, the tax management associates, and there isn't sufficient money to pay for them. It's available now in the line, and we're asking for your approval.
Great. Go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the unbudgeted appropriation of $18,615 from the personal property taxes and back tax interest accounts in the general fund to contractual services in the assessors' department pending the approval of the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just have a question on the format. Years ago, we had to waive Rule 7 to vote on something like this the same night?
No. That was a, that would be for an ordinance, and it was especially with the bond ordinances that we had to do that.
Okay. With the bonding?
Yep.
That doesn't apply to this?
Correct. It was for the bond ordinances. So, you got a good, you're, thank you, but, yep, we're okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number?
Item number two is to appropriate the actuarially determined contribution to the pension fund. It's an item that we just voted, $1,383,666 to appropriate from the current fund balance.
Okay. Take a motion on this?
Okay. I move to approve or appropriate $1,383,666 of the unassigned fund balance within the general fund to the pension actuarial funding account within the general fund to fund the actuarially determined contribution for fiscal year 2020 depending, or pending approval of the Board of Finance. I'm going to read too fast.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. This was, we just had our town meeting on this, so this is the money that's going to go into the pension fund to shore up the balance in that fund that we need if 14 or so employees that are selling the pension fund when they retire, there's obviously a payout we need to make. So, that's what this move is about. So, any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. Motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved? Thank you.
Item number three is a, for a purchase of what you call a MUNISITY permitting software. This is something that Frank Van Lette, a building official, has been spearheading this initiative. It's actually pretty fascinating to go towards a 24/7 town hall operation that will allow folks to apply for permits and do everything online. So, the fund's available, and it's an initiative through CROG. I'll have Frank give us your overview.
No, just for any questions you have regarding it.
Frank?
How you doing?
Good.
Okay. So, what is this, this is going to allow for?
Allow for the building department to essentially be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, eliminate the need for a lot of contractors, homeowners to come into the office. They can do everything online. We can approve it online. You can do all the inspections from the field in real time with the results going to the applicants in real time as opposed to paper trails now.
It's great. I'm sure you'll make a lot of people happy, not having to take time out of their day or a day off or away from their work or whatever, right, to come in, so?
Yeah, absolutely.
Will this be geared to take the payment, too?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, they can do it that way, too.
Yeah.
And they incur the fees themselves?
The fees are added on to the permit cost itself, so the town is not absorbing any costs.
Okay.
And the funding for this?
Yeah. So, this is coming from the Business Council community funding. This came as an initiative from that.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, even if the town hall is closed and get into this building, as part of, we've been trying to do a lot of these initiatives where imagining that the town hall is not accessible, that we should still be able to operate from a remote location, and the funding will come from that.
Okay.
And it'll include all of the software as well as, you know, the tablets and everything else that is required.
Right.
Great. Thank you. Nice. Okay. So, if we have no further questions of Frank or other comments, we could, we'll take a motion on this?
Okay. I move to utilize the Capital Region Council of Governments' request for proposal and award the contract to purchase MUNISITY permitting software and tablets to software consulting associates for an amount not to exceed $26,075.
Thank you. Take a second on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Item number four is a presentation from the cemetery committee.
Okay.
Do you want to say anything, Kate? An introduction or?
We have it displayed also.
It's up here?
Yep.
Should we?
Move.
Move? Guess if you want to see it, we probably need to move, huh? Unless we have eyes in the back of our head?
Well, you have the?
We do have the presentation here.
You have the presentation.
All right. So, we'll, Charles, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Hello there.
Mr. Town Manager, Ms. Town Clerk. My name is Charles Calorice. Most of you know me as Chairman of the Veterans Commission, but tonight I'm here as a member of the newly-funded Cemetery Commission. Back in March, when I came to meet our former manager, Jack Healy, for my budget for the Veterans Commission, he asked me if I would be interested in joining the Cemetery Commission. Being that I've been putting flags on graves since 2006 in the town cemeteries, I knew a little bit about it. So, I said, "Let me think about it." So, I got ahold of the chairman that used to be on it and asked him about what was going on, and he said that they had not been funded for years and they were not able to do much of anything. So, I got back to Jack and I explained that to him, and he said, "No, no, no." He says, "I have $5,000 in the budget this year. I have $2,500 in a grant for a ledge cemetery, and we have some donations." Now, for those of you that don't know about the 11 cemeteries in Berlin, we're going to take a little walk. So, we're going to start on Christian Lane next to the crematory, and then from there we're going to go to the Beckley Cemetery, which is located on Route 160, just before the farm behind Home Depot. And then from there, we're going to go to the Old Yard Cemetery on Sprucebrook Road, and that's next to the former house of Ed Haber. From there, we're going to go to the Berlin Turnpike across from the urban station. That's the Hall Cemetery. From there, we're going to go to Farmington Avenue by Messerio Park. That's the Dennison Cemetery. And then from there, we're going to go over to the Dunham Cemetery, which is on Norton Road just by the railroad tracks. And last but not least is the Ledge Cemetery, which is located on Cashman Place off of Four Rod Road. We also have four other cemeteries in town. Maple, which is on Worthington Ridge. We have the West Lane Cemetery, which is on High Road. We have the South Burial Grounds, which is across from the golf course on Suddington Road. And we have the Wilcox Cemetery in East Berlin. These are all privately owned and maintained. So, I committed to Jack that I would become a member, and he said he needed more people to volunteer. So, I immediately thought of my good friend, Dick Benson, who happens to be here tonight, who is the superintendent of the Wilcox Cemetery, and I figured, "Well, there's someone with some knowledge and expertise." Then I got my best friend who lives across the street from me, Ed Hornqual, who's here tonight, and got him to volunteer. Steve Biella, who was the chairman of our commission, was on, and he agreed to stay on. Arbicez Nannick is an alternate. She agreed to stay on. So, we needed one more, and I got Stephen Pastuzik. So, now we have a committee. Our first meeting, we decided to take a road trip to see how bad these seven cemeteries had been neglected. And with the help from Steve Woods from the Public Grounds Department, we got an eye full. Tree trimming was the first thing we noted that had to be done. Fixing broken gravestones was also a problem. We have some pictures after, too.
Yeah.
It was decided to commit the funds. We had to start trimming. With the help of Steve, we were able to schedule contract trimmers that he has on his program. The $2,500 grant that was earmarked for ledge, Cashman Place, was used for, will you show that picture?
Yep. That's before.
Before.
Was used for one day of trimming. $5,000 in our budget was used for two days of trimming at Beckley, one behind the Home Depot. Yep. These are before and after pictures. And that was the end of our funds. With the donations of $1,100, we were, we used to have signs constructed and placed at the seven cemeteries so people in town would know where they are. This was done by Steve Woods and his crew, and they also took care of the dead limbs at the Christian Lane Cemetery and the Sprucebrook Road Cemetery. And I think we have some pictures of that, too.
Is that where you want me to be?
Huh?
I'm on Bethley right now. Is that right?
Yep. Yep. That's fine. Now, at this point, I'd like to point out that the town does have a contract with a company to do lawn cutting and basic cleanup, but not the heavy trimming that was required for this. $2,500 a day for tree trimming might sound like a lot of money, but most of the work has to be done by hand and not with bucket trucks due to the graves being close together. They have been neglected for so long that the trees make a canopy over the gravestones, and this causes mildew and moss to grow on them. By opening them up and allowing the sun to get in, this will alleviate some of that. The town is very fortunate that the estate of the late Edward Dunham left $15,000 to be used only at the Dunham Cemetery. We will be doing some trimming in there and in the process of repairing the stone wall in the front. We are also procuring bids to have a period correct split rail fence installed to enhance the site. Gravestones will be repaired in the future. And in case people don't know it, Potter's Field is behind that. If you ever take a walk there, there's three people buried back there that must have been indigenous at one time.
Can I just hold you up?
Yep.
I'm on Christian Lane.
Okay.
So, we just have to kind of go.
Okay. You can see before, Christian Lane. Now, all that brush is cleaned out.
Can I see the sign?
If you saw it before, you saw all the dead limbs in there. They were just laying all over the gravestones, and Steve and his guys were able to clean that up for us.
Sprucebrook is next.
Sprucebrook, yep. That's a before. You can see how nasty that was. There it is, all cleaned up, mowed. So, this year's budget of $5,000 was used for two days right there at Dennison. So, okay, the commission is very fortunate. They have Steve Woods to guide us through this program. He's a very valuable asset for us, and with his continued support, we'll be able to accomplish a lot. I would also be remiss if we did not thank Kate Wall for keeping us on the straight and narrow. We realize that this is not going to be completed in a short time. This is a long-term project, and we have to start somewhere, and we think that we are on the way. We have not even begun to think of restoring gravestones or just cleaning them. We will be looking for organizations to maybe volunteer to help. Therefore, we ask that we consider for a budget of $29,000 to keep this program moving forward. We will be meeting with the finance director at budget time to present our budget expense. We know that times are tough for budgets, but we feel that we owe this to the citizens that are buried in these town-owned cemeteries. If you have a chance, take a walk through any of them, and you'll see names of our citizens say, "Wow, that name has a street named after it," or "That park." So, once we get the cemeteries trimmed, we'll be able to concentrate on restoring the stones, but trimming maintenance will still have to be addressed, but not as severe. I'll answer any questions if you have, if I can. If not, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Charles. Thanks for taking this on. We, I think we all have recognized that they've been ignored and haven't really been attended to for quite a while, so we're glad to start the process, and it looks like you've already made some great progress, so.
Yes, we have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a lot.
Thank you for your crew getting out there.
Thank you, all you guys, for volunteering.
Nice.
This presentation?
Keep moving.
Sure.
Sure. Number?
All right. Item number five. This pertains to the year anniversary celebrations of Timberland. You heard about this a little while ago. There's a committee working on it, and this request here is to tap into $4,000, the capital improvement fund, if you pay a deposit for the land laser show, and then paid back once you get the sponsorships. So, I have John Jaco over here.
Hey, John.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good, thanks. Again, what Eros had stated is the Timberland 50th Anniversary Committee is looking to approve of from the town council to utilize $4,000 out of the golf course CIP fund for the deposit on the laser, Connecticut Laser Lych, to secure them for the date on July 18, 2020.
And I assume that's because you just need it ahead of time to make the deposit?
To make the deposit, basically, to secure the date now.
Got you. Okay. Any questions for John? All right. So, we'll take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the use of the capital improvement funds to cover the required deposit with Connecticut Laser to ensure services for July 18, 2020, for the Timberland 50th Anniversary Celebration. It is understood that the $4,000 will be returned to the CIP once the sponsorships have been secured.
Thanks. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries? Thanks.
Item number six is a bid waiver request to purchase chemicals.
This is the early order program that we've gone through over the past probably 12 to 15 years. And basically, what it is, is BASF, Syngenta, Bayer, and C Pro classify a certain amount of their chemicals as agency products. And basically, what this means is that all the components and the chemicals, including all the inert, must be identical, and the products must be sold to the end user at the manufacturer's set price. So, basically, what the distributor vendor does is handles the distribution and invoicing of the products. So, really, it doesn't matter who we would buy the product from because of the prices set by the manufacturer, BASF, Syngenta, Bayer, and so forth. Basically, what this, by participating in the early order program, on the second page is a table that shows you'll receive 20% off all BASF products through the early order program. This will be approximately $6,600 rebate. So, Syngenta program is a 10% rebate off of the early order program, and then 7% off of anything that we purchase during the in-season. That's approximately $3,500, and then smaller amounts with C Pro and Bayer because we're spending less money with them. But all in all, it's, it's over $10,000 in rebates that we'll receive by participating in the early order program.
Great. Okay. Good. Any questions for John?
We do this all every year, so.
Yeah, every year. That's, that's great. We get the rebates. Plan early. So, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. I move to waive the bidding procedures and purchase chemicals from Harrell's in Winfield in the amount not to exceed $77,096, as this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin. Chemical purchases are through the early order programs of BASF, Syngenta, C Pro, and Bayer Chemical Companies.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Item number seven pertains to the truck wash bay. Statement of need. As you recall, at the previous council meeting, we ordered this to, another statement of need, the truck wash bay, to planning and zoning, with the 824 recommendation we had asked them to review it. So, the garage, the public works and facilities folks, they got together and came up with a very comprehensive statement of need that is attached to this document. Hopefully, you had the time to take a look at it, and we're asking you to approve it and order it to the Public Building Commission. Move forward.
Yes, that's great. And we, we've talked about this a lot. We know we need it. The only, the sad thing is that it's not going to be ready for this winter, unfortunately, but we were trying to get it done as fast as possible, and now it will go to our Public Building Commission. That's their expertise, so that's great. So, yeah.
Okay.
It's moving along, so that's good. We'll take a motion, then.
Okay. I move to accept the attached statement of need and refer the matter of the construction of a fully enclosed truck wash facility at the physical services complex to the Public Building Commission after a favorable Section 824 review recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second on that?
I second it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I'll just say that we, we really tried to push this to get it done before this winter, but, you know, there are, you know, as we all know, there is a process to go through for building anything, especially a town building, so, you know, that's just how it is. It's, it's good and bad, but we will get this done. So, it's good. It's on, on the right track. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So, item number eight. I'll be recall, in September, we provided you with an update on the TOD project. A lot of things have happened since then, and we have from time to time approved all the easements and remediation. But Jim Mahoney's here. I thought it'll be good for us to give you an update on this big project that I think is very important and trying to get some legs on it very soon.
Great.
Jim?
Mr. Jim, how we doing tonight?
Evening. How's everyone?
Good. Good.
Let's see. Give me a second here.
You're clearing the room. I don't know what you said. You didn't, you didn't even say anything yet. I don't know. You obviously had quite an effect on the audience, but it's all right.
You want me to give these things? Do you like a paper handout?
Sorry.
Oh, that, we have it?
Yeah.
We have it.
Yeah, we do.
We do have it.
Yep.
Right? Everybody have, everybody have it?
Yeah.
I have something.
The development in Farmington?
Yeah, the development in Farmington? I assume, Jim, because we already had this discussion, that Farmington name is just on here because we already...
Yeah, Kevin, yeah, we were updating.
We're working on a different name, right? Otherwise, we'll all be driving a...
There's an "ab" at the end, just didn't make it to the top.
Yeah, that's why, no, we're not, you know, otherwise we're all driving to Farmington to find the development. Where the heck is it? But...
So we just thought we'd give you a quick update. Things have been progressing, obviously always challenging project, and you've got the packet, so you're just following along. These are the parcels that were created. We've got the blue and the reddish are the boulevard parcels where the town's going to build the boulevard through them, and the others are development parcels except for the crosshatch parcel to the northeast side of the boulevard, which is a little triangle that the town's going to retain at this point, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. You've seen the renderings, they're still evolving, and we'll have some new rendering soon, but, and actually, I would say, one of the things that has been evolving is that the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved the project subject to staff approval of the architecturals, and our architectural consultant, Brian Hughes from Chikonski Hughes, has been working with Newport's architect on the plans, and we're understanding that they're pretty much in agreement now, so that the architecturals are pretty much set, and Norrie will be getting a report on that shortly. This is the, you know, site plan, general site plan remains the same. Again, we've got about 76 apartments, 19,000-plus square feet of commercial space. It's being developed in phases, so the green and the orange are Phase 1, it's 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue. One of the things we'll be talking about in the next council item is easements in that Phase 1D, which is the orange area. What we recognize is that part of, part of the access and parking for Phase 1, 903 and 913, we're actually on 889 Farmington Avenue. So what we did with our environmental consultant, originally the plan is, was to install a cap over the entire 889 Farmington Avenue parcel to isolate the soils under that liner, and we did additional testing in both the boulevard area and also the orange area that's shown here, and we were able to determine that there, you know, the, we didn't have soil exceedances in the orange area. The boulevard area, there's some soils that still exceeded the standards, but we can move them elsewhere on the site to put them under the cap. So basically, we're not doing the cap or liner in the boulevard and in the orange area, so that frees up that area for, you know, its intended purposes in Phase 1. So Newport can go in and, you know, build the access, the parking to support the Phase 1 buildings, and that was important from the point of view of sequencing the project. Again, the boulevard concept plan, parking along the boulevard will be available for Newport's use, but also general public use. Yeah, the money for the boulevard is one of the major changes, you know, I think we reported to you last time that we were short still, and so we were looking for reprogramming of certain grants that we had pre, we had, one was for the train station. I think we reported that, you know, we had the approval of the Office of Policy Management, we're working out the details with the Department of Transportation, and you've subsequently approved the PAL between the town and the state, they determined the numbers, you know, in terms of how much would be programmed back into this project. It's 291,000, then we're sending back some additional money that will be programmed back, another 38,000 and change. So that money is available, and then we had additionally requested funding, the, we had gotten the, what we called the TOD property acquisition grant, which allowed us to purchase 861 Farmington Avenue, and also we wanted to use to purchase the Conrail spur, and we've been negotiating with Conrail for about two years. We had not really gotten, you know, been able to make a deal with them on acquisition of the spur, so what we're, you know, doing is reprogramming the piece of that that would have been used for the spur and putting it into the boulevard project. So with that funding combined with the 460,000 from the sale of 903 and 913 for the project, which you previously approved, that brings us up to our budget estimate of, you know, we have about a little over a million four available for the boulevard project. Obviously, we still have a timing issue with the sale of 903 and 913, but we'll, you know, we'll work through that as we go along.
So with all that combined, we got the...
We got the money.
Oh, good.
You know, obviously, we're hoping that the budget is going to come in, the project will come in lower than estimated.
Yeah.
You know, we have the estimated amount at this point, so, you know, and obviously we had quite a shortfall to begin with, so we may, you know, work through with the town investment.
Yeah, that's great.
And the state, and the state is conditioning their approval on certain things, you know, like we make their investment, we do the whole boulevard, we get all the permits, which obviously we have to do anyway, so those are all acceptable conditions, and, yeah, so big, big progress.
Yeah, that's good.
The boulevard.
Nice.
A couple of things on boulevard design, one is that we're planning on, the design is just about complete, we're going to try to submit our permit applications to DOT this week, but we have a few more details to work out, so now we're thinking next week, but one of the things that's going to happen with the project is there's going to be some off-site improvements we're going to be sharing with Newport, and one of those is some work in Farmington Avenue, where we're going to create a bypass lane for eastbound traffic, so we'll narrow it to two 11-foot lanes and create a bypass lane, so that if you have traffic turning left into the boulevard, other traffic is going to be able to move around them and not back that up, okay? And we've reviewed this plan with DOT, we think it'll be acceptable to them. You know, we'll basically involve, you know, milling and, you know, repaving that section that's in gray in the diagram in front of the project. We'll have to, you know, move the crown because it'll be aligned with the lanes, so, you know, there's going to be some roadwork, and we're also going to be doing some drainage work in Farmington right away, Farmington Avenue right away either, it's going to be, we're probably going to increase the size of the pipe just in that one section, which is currently located on the curves, we might try to relocate it inside where the snow shelf is for the sidewalk, because we're going to be creating, you know, doing new sidewalks anyway. So we're working on a few of those details, but we expect to make, submit the permit application next week. And the second, the second piece that we're sharing with Newport is the storm drainage, and again, we try to minimize all the impacts in Farmington Avenue, and what we've come up with in order to do that is to do retention in that triangle piece, so that, you know, blue turquoise shaded pattern there is a subsurface detention system that would be constructed in the, in the triangle parcel to detain water both from our part of the project and Newport's part of the project, and again, we'll work out, we'll work out the details of how exactly we do the proration based on flows and traffic flows and such, but I think that, we had some meetings today about it, and I think probably what we're going to do is propose something where we, the town does the actual work in the Farmington Avenue right away, and, you know, we come up with estimates, prorations, and then adjust to the actual bid amounts, and then have Newport do the subsurface drainage system, because we think that'll save us, you know, save us some money, and again, we'll, so we'll prorate back and forth once we get to that point.
Has that system been designed yet?
It's being designed now, no.
Being designed?
Yeah, right.
There's like zero percolation in that area?
Well, it's, you know, high water table and such, but yeah, they're, they're working on the design.
Then that's the piece of land that the town's going to retain?
Right.
So in the future, we won't be able to build anything there, it's just going to be a park or a...
Well, the idea, I think the idea was, given the size of it, a small triangle in the front, you know, there's not much of a building envelope, footprint there, you'd be able to build, and the original designs, as you probably remember, we had a park, open space area, and, you know, so the, you know, we'll still be able to utilize the property for those purposes with the subsurface detention. And again, we had, on the environmental side, we covered this a little bit already, but with, we did some additional soil testing, and we were able to pull back the cap, but, you know, the other, the other thing we're still investigating is, as you know, the groundwater migrating off the site, this, you know, we got the groundwater flowing toward Farmington Avenue, and we did the additional wells, they were installed on the other, on the south side of Farmington Avenue, they have been sampled, we should have probably the first round of sampling results next week, and the whole purpose of our effort here is to try to avoid having to put in an active groundwater remediation system, and we've also done some further analysis with, there's new DEP standards that are coming out, which will be generally favorable to us, they call them, they call them Wave 2 standards, but Lorero has looked at all the, you know, sampling results that we had to date, you know, based on the Wave 2 standards, and it's kind of more favorable for us. We may have, again, we're going to be doing some additional sampling, both on 861, either on 873 or on a new well that we put there, or on our, we have a well right on the border of 873, and then these wells we have in Farmington Avenue, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, use those sampling results to avoid having to do the active remediation system. So we're continuing down that, on that path, and, you know, again, this just shows kind of the area of the boulevard, which we're able to not cap. This, this slide shows, you know, now how the liner cap has been pulled off of the property lines, reduces the area of the cap, which is going to save on the capital side, but it also allowed, you know, allows Newport to go ahead and do that, you know, do that Phase 1 work and not be delayed by the 889 work. And, you know, just going back to this for a second, I mean, one of the other timing issues that we've kind of rethought perhaps since we talked in September was that, you know, we, we were thinking that we were originally thinking we were going to try to bid the liner work in, at the same time as we bid the boulevard, and subsequently, you know, as we thought through it, we realized, and we've talked about it in these easement, you know, documents, 824s, but that Newport's going to have to do all their subliner work before we put the liner in, that's before they own the property, so they really have to be, you know, closed on Phase 1, on the properties under construction in Phase 1, and so that's not, and this is, you know, again, third phase of the project, so that they wouldn't get to until later in 2020, so that liner work would be, we'll try to bid it in the summer and then have that liner installed in the fall, or, you know, in that vicinity if we can keep this on track. And we've talked about easements, and again, these, we're proposing those easements in that 1D area for Newport to allow them to do the construction of the access drive and the parking, and that area we're able to pull off the cap, and that's one of the things we'll be considering tonight. And then also, the green area in this slide shows a license area that we would have for Newport to construct those subliner improvements, the footings, foundations, utilities, et cetera, it's going to be below the liner before they, since it's before they actually acquire the property, we have to give them, we have to give them a license to do that. So those are the, those are the ones we're considering tonight. We may also, you know, we shaded an area purple next to 83, we're, as you know, we're proposing an easement in favor of 83 also, that's in the works, but we may look for an easement from 83 because there's a, like, eight-foot strip along their property line, where Newport is willing to do the improvements of the paving and the islands, et cetera, and, but we need, we need to get the rights to do that, otherwise, you know, we can certainly stop it at the property line, but it would be, you know, better project, cleaner, you know, lines to finish it out, so that's the, that's the plan on that. So that's kind of the overview of, you know, the updates, progress on funding, Newport's, you know, again, architectural design, we got, working through, you know, finalizing the plans for the boulevard, we submitted the permit application shortly, we have, you know, we have the appeal on the approvals, which may cause a delay, but we're just going to, you know, we're just charging forward on all fronts as we can, and we'll see, so we'll see what happens with the appeal, and if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
No, it's a great presentation, Jim, thanks, and great to see it's moving forward.
Step by step.
Yes, I know, it's a long process, and it's a painful one, but, but, you know, it's great, we came up with the funding though, too.
The funding, yeah.
It's great. Yeah, that's a great thing. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, you might want to stay there.
Stay there, yes.
Next one.
Number nine.
My number nine?
He number nine.
Is actually the item he just mentioned, it's easement on 89.
Right. Yeah, that's what you just talked about, yeah.
Please, say what you want.
Yeah, I think we just covered it, it's, you know, easement of part of 889 for the construction of the driveways and access for Phase 1 of the project, plus the license on the balance of 889 for their work subliner.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we'll take a motion.
Okay, I move to grant an easement to Newport Realty Group LLC to construct and use driveways and parking areas on 889 Farmington Avenue to support Phase 1 of its development project that will occur on 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue, and for a license to construct utilities, footings, and foundations under the liner at 889 prior to the construction of the liner, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you, second, thank you, Charlie. Any further questions or concerns? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thanks.
Thank you. And obviously, we're, you know, we're authorizing all these things, I'm working with Jeff on the easement documents, but the, you know, the easements will actually be executed at the time when we sell the property, et cetera, so we'll sequence that.
I mean, our Corporation Council's actually spending some time on this?
He's spending a lot, a lot of time, they just ask him.
I know, I know, I've heard, yes, I know. I didn't have him spending time on it.
Number 10 is a tax abatement application from Complete Sheet Metal LLC.
Yes, thank you. Complete Sheet Metal is actually owned by Berlin resident Jeff Machad, started his business based out of his home, he now leases space at 504 Rod, which is the old indeluxe building kind of down in the dip on 4 Rod. He is under contract to purchase a lot almost where you see the sign right now for the property, so you come in the driveway on the right-hand side, they're going to move the driveway, he's going to build 11,000-square-foot building where he's going to have his company, going to creating more employment. Complete Sheet Metal does a lot of decorative work, both residential, commercial, as well as some roof, under the roofing and others, so very successful business, essentially looking for a three-year tax abatement for him on that brand-new building that he's going to put on the property.
Great.
Excellent.
Okay, we have no questions, we'll take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve a tax abatement for Complete Sheet Metal for the construction of an 11,000-square-foot building of 50% in year 1, 40% in year 2, 30% in year 3 per the town's tax abatement policy.
Great.
Excellent.
Second on that? Second, thank you, Charlie. Any other questions or concerns from council members? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, great to see another building going up. Great.
Very much.
Thanks.
All right, as in item number 11, the Town Council Calendar.
Calendar.
You got my slideshow ready?
What's that?
Got my slideshow ready for this?
Yeah, I do.
Always very exciting, the calendar, very exciting.
You want the slideshow?
Very exciting, Brendan, what do you have for us?
Putting most of the work in on this, it was pretty simple, so. Just thought I'd send it out last week ahead of time, just so if anybody had any questions, since we didn't do that last time.
What do we have? Did I, we have some concerns with dates, or did you move them? Remember?
I did, well, Brendan and I spoke briefly, and the only thing is, I was, January meeting is January 8th, I'm sorry, December, December 8th, 2020. I didn't know if that was too early in the month, and then to go and not have a meeting until a month later for January 8th, or are you comfortable with that?
I don't know.
You can always change it, or...
Want to move it a week later? Maybe? Or no? Maybe move it a week later, huh?
Move it a week later?
What do you think?
Okay.
So it's not a whole month before we?
Yeah, we can do that.
Right? Still not into the holidays, really?
Yeah, because it will be like the 13th through...
Yeah, so why don't, want to move, so we'll move that one?
Sure.
Okay.
What else, anything else? That we, problems with? No? What's that? Just because I know that, what's that? The calendar here, the July, that July 7th, is that? I guess that's after the 4th, right, this year, I mean, after that, so the 4th is on a Saturday, okay.
July 4th is on a Saturday?
Yeah.
I think.
So, I mean, I, you know, that's always, people are away, but it's, it's a little bit different this year, right, so it is what it is, I guess. I guess that's mine. What else?
Want to move those out to the 14th and the 28th?
I don't know, what do you got, what do you all, what does everybody think? Want to move them, because it's too close, like the 4th, I know a lot of people...
Shift it a week?
Shift it maybe, does that make sense, away from the 4th? I mean, it's, you know, the whole month is vaca, you know, people take vacations different times, I know, so.
I don't know what I'm doing tomorrow, I don't know what I'm doing next year.
Yeah, I know.
I know that I would change it.
Did you just leave it? Yeah, all right, I mean, I don't know either, no, I'm with you, I don't know what I'm doing by July yet either, but...
It can always be changed, or...
Yeah, if it gets close and we...
July's a tough month, I mean, everybody's been...
Yeah.
Anyway, so you might as well just move it as is.
So we'll get it, yeah, we'll do it. So we have, you know how we, the senior center, where's the senior center meeting, you know how we, so, we, they hear?
They have, the Board of Finance has scheduled a forum with the senior center.
March 31st?
And then, yes, and then it will be there, and then later on, they're doing the budget hearing at the high school.
Yep. But, you know, we've had...
Meetings at the senior center?
Council meetings, yeah.
Yep, we can do that.
Didn't we do two last year?
We did two last year.
Two, right? So what do we want to do? We want to do one in...
You want to do the, when you vote on the Board of Finance budget?
Maybe, the 7th? Is that the one?
In April, yes, April 7th.
I just worry that, I mean, that's an important meeting, I...
You could do it on the 21st, it's still before the referendum.
Yeah, it's on the 21st, because I'm just afraid that during the day, I don't want people not, you know, that can't make it if we got to work, those of us that work, which is most of us.
And then last year, you did it in October.
Yeah, you want to do the 6th?
Try.
Try that one, I mean, we could change it, right? Try that one. I mean, we could change it, right, Kate?
Yes.
We can always change it. So we have those. All right, so that's good.
All right. So I'm going to check with the dates with the senior center tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And then as soon as I get confirmation from them, I'll email this out again with the two proposals for the senior center and change in December 8th to the 13th, I think it is, or double check.
Okay. Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
Sure.
All right. That's good. That wasn't too painful. That's good. All right. Great. So, so we making a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the Town Council Meeting Calendar for 2020 and of January 2021 as amended.
I will second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Kate.
It was a great committee.
Committee. Committee of one. Always good.
Done.
Any, any other concerns or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Thank you. So where are we at now? Constables?
One month, yeah.
Our constables. Okay. So what do we got? We got, they're all here. So we'll just go ahead and...
There are four applications.
Yep.
For you.
Three, four. Okay. So we'll, what do we, just nominate each one, I guess? Go through the whole process, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll take, which one on our...
Okay. I'll nominate from the first spot, John Baccaro.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of John Baccaro?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Welcome, John, back.
Next one, I'll nominate Bob Zipadelli.
Okay, thanks for that. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Close the nominations. All those in favor of Mr. Zipadelli?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, congratulations, Bob.
For three, I'll nominate John Kozak.
Thank you for that nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And finally?
Last one, I'll nominate Paul Eschew.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none? Close the nominations. All those in favor of Mr. Eschew?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. That, and what do we have? So we have one vacancy left?
We have two now.
We have two vacancies?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, because what, Mr. DeFranco, I see it on here. He didn't reply? Okay. All right, so we have two. All right, so we'll work on that.
Have that whole big list coming.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, they're beating down the doors. Okay, we'll, no, we'll, we'll find some candidates. Okay, so we got the Town Manager's Report.
I have a report at this time.
No.
My comments for the decision.
Okay. Special Committee Reports?
We haven't.
We don't have, we didn't have any, right?
No.
Counselor Communications, the thing we want to talk about?
I just want to wish everybody a happy, you know, holiday season, safe travels, and better health for everyone.
Thanks. We all probably second that one. It's a good one. Okay. So again, yeah, everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And we'll be back after the, after the holidays, which will, will be very, very quickly. It always seems to go fast. So we have our Acceptance of Minutes. What do we get? So a motion on November 19th?
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the November 19th Town Council Meeting Minutes.
A second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. And our November 26th?
Make a motion to accept the November 26th Town Council Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. Second.
Close those off.
All right. Thanks for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And that brings us to our Executive Session. So we'll make a motion to move into Executive Session.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move into Executive Session for Personnel Matters, Connecticut General State Statutes 1-200, 6 Part A, Concerning the Appointment, Employment, Performance, and Evaluation of a Public Employee, Arusha Jayawagrima.
We have, so we'll invite in Arusha, obviously, Roche, and, and Mr. D'Onofrio, Operation Council. And we'll take a...
Do you second, Charlie?
Second. Oh, second on that. Yeah.